I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There it is. Thank you, sir. Are all the council members' microphones on?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, as the form of the city government transitions from the commission to the council manager, we are now called upon to select a mayor chair and deputy mayor. I move that the new council adopt the method for the selection of mayor chair and deputy mayor positions as defined in the handout entitled Selection of Mayor Chair and Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay. So there's thirds and fourths. That's all right. We do have a second. It is moved and seconded that the new council adopt a method for selection of the mayor chair and deputy mayor positions as defined in the handout entitled Selection of Mayor Chair and Deputy Mayor. And following selection, approve resolution number 1129-0518 designating the mayor chair and deputy mayor. At this time, is there any discussion or debate?
Anybody got any questions?
Hearing none. The question is on the adoption of the motion that the new council consider the adoption the method for selecting the mayor chair and deputy mayor positions as defined in the handout entitled Selection of Mayor Chair and Deputy Mayor. And following selection, approve resolution number 1129-0518 designating the mayor chair and deputy mayor. The vote on this motion shall be by simple majority. Those in favor of the motion say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Oh, okay. I guess we do it right. Aye, okay, we oppose that. And if there's any noes. Sorry, I'm just reading this. It's the first time I've chaired a meeting this long. All right, so we have, we are going to move forward on this. We now proceed with the selection of mayor chair and deputy mayor per the process detail, obviously, in the handout entitled Selection of Mayor Chair and Deputy Mayor. I'm turning it over to our interim city manager, Vicki Look, at this time.
And I am functioning as deputy clerk at this time, and I am now going to call for nominations are now in order to the office of the mayor chair of the Shelton City Council.
I wish to nominate Bob Rogers for mayor of the City of Shelton Council.
I would nominate Gary Kronz for mayor.
I'd like to nominate Deidra Peterson for mayor.
Touche.
So I do want to ask if any of the persons that have been nominated are going to be nominated. Having that, then, once all the nominations are committed, I will summarize the nominated names, and the names nominated were Bob Rogers.
This is our first meeting like this, so just bear with us.
And Gary Kronz. Deidra Peterson. So there are no other nominations at this time. So I will distribute the ballots for the mayor chair. For the first person that was nominated. So if you are voting for the person nominated, which is Bob Rogers, that's the first person nominated, and if there is a no vote, then circle your no vote in the bottom, and I will collect the ballots when you're done. The first person to get four ballot votes will be the other deputy mayor chair.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
If there's not a majority, we can go back through the round? Okay. Thank you, Kristen.
Keep going until you get four. Be here all night.
Good call.
And we sign our name on the top, we print our name on the top, sign on the bottom?
Yes, please. I will say that these are public votes, so that they will become a primary. Okay, I will hand out the ballots for the second person nominated, and that is Gary Kronz. Now, if you've already voted in the first round, if you've already voted for someone in the first round, then you would vote a no vote. It is a free vote.
It's starting over. Bob didn't get, didn't get four, so.
It's simply yes or no.
Keep going until we find four.
So we do vote for someone. All right.
Got that.
Everybody's thoroughly confused now.
He didn't vote for himself. Oh, yeah. Just a gap over here. What, a gap of two?
Thank you.
So we have to...
Round three? Yep. Round three, we do not have... Again? So this will be round three, as to Deidra Peterson voting on the slate.
Sure beats playing bingo out there at the casino. Not that I do a lot of that. We do have air conditioning, we just don't turn it on.
So, two yes. Two yes. Okay, so we fill in the question.
All right, so having failed to obtain a majority for any of the three original nominations, we would appropriately restart the nomination process, and anyone who's not interested in so serving could decline the nomination at this time.
I think I'd like to decline at this time. So, it looks like we have a couple of runner-ups over there, and we will hopefully get a majority in that way of going.
So at this point, we would have Bob Rogers and Deidra Peterson nominated. Would there be any other nominations before that closes for round two? So in the order nominated, we will run a vote for Bob Rogers.
You having fun, Vicki? Huh? Maybe that bingo ain't that bad out there, I don't know.
Off that captain's head. Captain's head.
Hey! So, looks like we might want a little photo op on this one, Bob.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I hope that this job gives you as much pleasure as it's given me. And I know, I'm not, I'm serious about it. We've had a lot of good things that have happened. And so, this is your gavel right here, and you'll do a great job.
Thanks, sir.
Give Bob a big hand, please.
I would like to say, Mayor, that you've done a good job for six years.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Deidra. All right, so, Bob?
What next, Bob?
Where are we at with all this stuff now?
Huh? It's all right. Now we've got vice chair.
Okay. Okay. So, Vicki? As for now?
Yes.
Turn to page, thank you. Thank you, Joe. Okay. Um... Sorry.
Second page?
Second page. Nomination? Okay, thank you. Nominations are now in order for the office of Deputy Mayor of the City of Shelton City Council.
I nominate Deidra Peterson.
I still would like to nominate Gary Kronz for deputy mayor. I think we need some experience, please don't shake your head, Mr. Olson, that we need some experience right now with the...
And I would decline that at this point. I would still refer to nominating Deidra Peterson at this time.
Any others?
Anyone else?
Is that it? That was quick and simple. Can we do a vocal voter?
You can.
You can?
Yes.
It's up to Bob. You're the chair, Bob.
No further nominations.
When there's no other nominations, yeah.
Can we do a unanimous, okay. Everyone in favor of Deidra Peterson being appointed deputy mayor of the City of Shelton say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Deidra. So, we're on to reading the, have to accept the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. So can I ask for a reading of resolution of number 1129-0518?
Resolution number 1129-0518, a resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, designating mayor chair and deputy mayor.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution number 1129-0518?
I'll make that motion. City staff recommends the reading, excuse me, I move to adopt the resolution number 1129-0518, a resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, designating mayor chair and deputy mayor.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution's passed. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is proclamation. Will someone from staff please read the proclamation for the week?
I believe Councilwoman Dorsey is going to read that.
All right. City of Shelton proclamation. Whereas the American Public Works Association has declared the week of May 20 through 26, 2018, as National Public Works Week, and has set the theme of the power of the public works, and whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Shelton, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the state of Washington to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960, now therefore the city council of the City of Shelton, Washington, in conjunction with the American Public Works Association, does hereby proclaim the week of May 20 through 26, 2018, as Public Works Week, and calls upon citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Need any action on that? Do we need action on that?
Thank you very much for reading the question.
Thanks, Greg. Okay. So, next up is council reports. Councilmember Dorsey?
Oh, all right. Today, I was gone most of last week because my grandson and his wife had another baby, so I had a briefing today with Bob and Vicki. I had a meeting with the Mason Transit Authority Board today at 4:00. The council retreat is coming up May 17, 9:00 a.m. at the Transit Center. And the Public Works Week celebration is, is that Tuesday, May 22?
That's correct.
Okay, 1:00?
Yes.
Okay. And that's what I have. Who's next?
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Kronz, please.
Yes, well, today I had a wonderful experience going over to Olympia and visiting Kiody Village there. It's kind of a, kind of like a complex tiny homes and whatnot, and Tom Davis was there, and he kind of gave us a little tour and stuff, and so it was an enjoyable experience. Obviously, I think it's this Thursday, we're having the all-day council retreat, and I'm sure there are many, many other things that I will be doing over the next two weeks.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember McDowell?
Well, last week I was in eastern Washington for our left board conference, and that, I'm not sure if everyone knows what left board is, it's law enforcement officers and firefighters, and the city and the county managed the medical bills for the retired police officers and firefighters in Mason County in the city. So I was there, learned lots of really cool upcoming medical stuff that will be very enlightening for our retired men coming up and already that are retired and getting older. So, that was very interesting. I met with Bob and Vicki this week for briefing Thursday. We have an all-day workshop for the new council, and that is, of course, open to the public, so anyone wants to come and listen to city stuff. I have a board of health meeting next Thursday, the 22nd, at 3:00 p.m., and the public works 1:00 p.m. celebration, and on the 23rd, I have a memorial hall board at 8:00 in the morning, and that's my couple weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Onisco?
On the 11th, I had a staff briefing with Vicki and Bob and several of the management staff. On the 4th, yesterday, I had onboard trainings, basically, we were hired as a city employee. I went to a groundbreaking for the Kiody Village, I'm sorry, I went to a groundbreaking for the downtown connector project. Today, I had a tiny homes tour, and I'm here for the city meeting. And we have a retreat on the 17th, and on the 24th, we'll be doing a EDC lunch, or event and a chamber lunch, sorry. Has it backwards?
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
As mentioned, May 11th was our first briefing with city staff. We had our onboarding yesterday, as well as the downtown connector project groundbreaking. On Thursday is our city retreat. This Friday, I'll be attending a rail riders event for the pre-grand opening for that new business coming to town. May 18th, I'll be at the Waves of Perfection Museum benefit out at Squawson, and May 24th, I'll be attending the chamber luncheon and the EDC membership drive.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmidt?
Last week, I had a briefings with the city staff as well, attended the onboarding yesterday, and met with Vicki Look. Also attended the groundbreaking, very exciting times, can't wait for that to get going. Attended the tour with Tom Davis and some folks from the county and Crossroads Housing, as well as councilmember Kronz and Onisco today at Kiody Village. It was very interesting to learn about the tiny homes project there, and then attending the all-day retreat on Thursday. Looking forward to that.
Thank you, councilmember. This last week, I attended a briefing with staff on Friday with several others. We had onboard boarding Monday, getting our phones, I guess we got our phones on Friday. Attended the groundbreaking for the all-street project, thank you, Craig. And this week, we have the all-day retreat, and I think that's it for last week.
Mayor Chair, could I make a motion at this time?
I believe so.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we start these council meetings at 6:00 p.m. instead of 7:00 p.m. Is there a second?
Second, that.
Can, that's a motion to put it on the business agenda for next week, so we can comment on that?
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah. I'd like to maybe table that, so we can talk about it a little bit. Discuss it now? I mean, first of all, is staff on board with that? I mean, it gets us out a little earlier, if that's what you want to do.
I don't have any...
No problem with it?
It seems to me, however, that one of the pieces that we've been hearing from people is they want to be more involved in the process, and we just recently changed to 7:00 o'clock. I would be very interested in discussing this, and personally, a 6:00 o'clock meeting works just fine for me. I would prefer to see this item tabled until our next business meeting.
Joining?
I agree.
Yeah.
Same with you.
Yeah.
This is exciting. All right. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, time for general public comment?
We have Donna for...
So Donna, has anyone signed up for general public comment?
Yes. We have Jim Throckmorton.
So please come forward and state your name. Thank you.
Jim Throckmorton, first, I'd like to say congratulations to all of you. I think we made good choices, so. I got a little problem, I'll tell a short story about it. I have rentals in this town, several...
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution number 1129-0518?
I'll make that motion. City staff recommends a reading, excuse me. I move to adopt the resolution number 1129-0518, a resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, designating Mayor, Chair, and Deputy Mayor.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is passed. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is proclamation. Will someone from staff please read the proclamation for the week?
I believe Councilwoman Dorsey is going to read that.
All right. City of Shelton proclamation. Whereas the American Public Works Association has declared the week of May 20 through 26, 2018, as National Public Works Week and has set the theme of the power of the public works. And whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Shelton. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the state of Washington to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, in conjunction with the American Public Works Association, does hereby proclaim the week of May 20 through 26, 2018, as Public Works Week and calls upon citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Need any action on that? Do we need any action on that?
Thank you very much for reading.
Thanks, Craig.
Yes.
Okay. So, next up is council reports. Councilmember Dorsey?
Oh, all right. Today, I was gone most of last week because my grandson and his wife had another baby. So I had a briefing today with Bob and Vicki. I had a meeting with the Mason Transit Authority Board today at 4:00. The council retreat is coming up May 17, 9:00 a.m. at the Transit Center. And the Public Works Week celebration is, is that Tuesday, May 22?
That's correct.
Okay, 1:00?
Yes.
Okay. And that's what I have. Who's next?
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Franz, please.
Yes, well, today I had a wonderful experience going over to Olympia and visiting Kiody Village there. It's kind of a, kind of like a complex tiny homes and whatnot. And Tom Davis was there and he kind of gave us a little tour and stuff. And so it was an enjoyable experience. Obviously, I think it's this Thursday, we're having the all-day council retreat. And I'm sure there are many, many other things that I will be doing over the next two weeks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McDowell?
Well, last week I was in eastern Washington for our left board conference. And that, I'm not sure if everyone knows what left board is. It's law enforcement officers and firefighters. And the city and the county managed the medical bills for the retired police officers and firefighters in Mason County in the city. So I was there, learned lots of really cool upcoming medical stuff that will be very enlightening for our retired men coming up and already that are retired and getting older. So that was very interesting. I met with Bob and Vicki this week for briefing Thursday. We have an all-day workshop for the new council and that is, of course, open to the public. So if anyone wants to come and listen to city stuff. I have a board of health meeting next Thursday, the 22nd, at 3:00 p.m. Then the Public Works 1:00 p.m. celebration. And on the 23rd, I have a memorial hall board at 8:00 in the morning. And that's my couple weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Onisco?
On the 11th, I had a staff briefing with Vicki and Bob and several of the management staff. On the 4th, yesterday, I had onboard training. Basically, we were hired as a city employee. I went to a groundbreaking for the Kiody Village, I'm sorry, I went to a groundbreaking for the downtown connector project. Today, I had a tiny homes tour and I'm here for the city meeting. And we have a retreat on the 17th. And on the 24th, we'll be doing a EDC lunch or event and a chamber lunch. Sorry. I said backwards.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
As mentioned, May 11th was our first briefing with city staff. We had our onboarding yesterday as well as the downtown connector project groundbreaking. On Thursday is our city retreat. This Friday, I'll be attending a rail riders event for the pre-grand opening for that new business coming to town. May 18th, I'll be at the Waves of Perfection Museum benefit out at Squawson. And May 24th, I'll be attending the chamber luncheon and the EDC membership drive.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmidt?
Last week, I had a briefings with the city staff as well. Attended the onboarding yesterday and met with Vicki Look. Also attended the groundbreaking, very exciting times. Can't wait for that to get going. Attended the tour with Tom Davis and some folks from the county and Crossroads Housing as well as Councilmember Franz and Onisco today at Kiody Village. It was very interesting to learn about the tiny homes project there. And then attending the all-day retreat on Thursday. Looking forward to that.
Thank you, Councilmember. This last week, I attended a briefing with staff on Friday with several others. We had onboard boarding Monday, getting our phones. I guess we got our phones on Friday. Attended the groundbreaking for the All Street Project. Thank you, Craig. And this week, we have the all-day retreat. And I think that's it for last week.
Mayor, Chair, can I make a motion at this time?
I believe so.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we start these council meetings at 6:00 p.m. instead of 7:00 p.m. Is there a second?
Second, that.
Hmm.
Ken, that's a motion to put it on the business agenda for next week, so we can get comment on that?
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah. I'd like to maybe table that so we can talk about it a little bit. Discuss it now? I mean, first of all, is staff on board with that? I mean, it gets us out a little earlier if that's what you want to do.
I don't know.
No problem with it?
It seems to me, however, that one of the pieces that we've been hearing from people is they want to be more involved in the process. And we just recently changed to 7:00 o'clock. I would be very interested in discussing this. And personally, a 6:00 o'clock meeting works just fine for me. I would prefer to see this item tabled until our next business meeting.
Joining?
I agree.
Yeah.
Same vote.
Yeah.
This is exciting. All right. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, time for general public comment?
Yes. We have Donna for...
So Donna, has anyone signed up for general public comment?
We have Jim Throckmorton.
So please come forward and state your name. Thank you.
Jim Throckmorton. First, I'd like to say congratulations to all of you. I think we made good choices, so. I got a little problem. I'll tell a short story about it. I have rentals in this town, several of them. I have one renter, pays his rent, takes excellent care of his house, doesn't pay his garbage bill. Waste Connection cannot disconnect his garbage because you folks won't let him or won't let them disconnect. There's a city ordinance that says if anybody's occupying the house, you got to have garbage You feel, I know as the City of Shelton, you have the right to come after the landlord for the garbage if the tenants didn't pay it. My understanding is Waste Connection, and I talked to them and they said they will not shut it off, they can't because of your law, is now operating the garbage service. So I've been reading this thing which says that's still kind of up in the air. But anyway, you've put me in a position where I have to evict a good tenant, not for anything they've done to me, not because they're not taking care of my property, but because they're not paying your or Waste Connection's garbage bill. So I'd like to find some way to resolve that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, tell us, Donna?
Yes, we have Mike Olson.
Mike Olson, congratulations to all the new council people on your elections. And I was hoping that this would be a historic night because it's a historic move for the City of Shelton. And it did not leave me wanting. It was a great adventure watching the first processes. And I will commend Gary for making the right decision for the people in the city for once. Thank you.
And we have Lynette George. She comes with props. I saw her earlier. That brought her props. You went the wrong way.
There's no good place to put this. Congratulations to all of you. I am from Seaback, Washington, so this is kind of cool. I never, I didn't know that this was happening tonight. I'm the founder of the nonprofit, the Blue Star Banner Program. We have been in Kitsap County for 14 years. And we are trying to get it started here in Shelton. So I would like to bring knowledge to the program. And this, like I said, was started 14 years ago. It is street banners that we install for active-duty military. They are blue stars as long as they are in active duty. If they die on active duty, the blue star changes to the gold star. I saw this program down in California back 16 years ago and started a nonprofit. I worked for the Navy and I'm a budget officer, so I knew I wouldn't be able to get the cities to do this because everybody's on budget crunches. And so I started a nonprofit and it's been successfully going. And we have over 300 banners up. We have expanded into Jefferson County and Clalum County, and we're also in Balfour. And so my goal is to get it approved here in Shelton. Does anybody have any questions? I'm going to leave.
Where do you hang them?
Around the street poles, throughout the communities, wherever the city authorizes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you got a cord, yeah. Okay, there I, I was watching that one. I saw it. Oh, boy.
I have one more, Mayor. Terry Drexler?
Thank you, Donna.
Good evening, councilmembers. Congratulations. I'm delighted to be here to witness this historic event, and I thank you all for stepping up to public service. Mason County collects almost $1.5 million towards housing and behavioral health services. The housing money comes from a recording fee that's charged statutorily, we're required to charge it statutorily. And then the council, the commissioner had passed a 1/10th, a 1% sales tax for substance abuse treatment and mental health services. Just today, we passed a resolution forming a behavioral health home housing advisory board. And on that advisory board is a position for a city council member. We have $1.5 million and a lot of need, and this advisory board will make a recommendation in prioritizing our funding for these two dire needs in the county. And I hope that when you have your retreat, that you'll make a selection among yourselves of who would like to serve on behalf of the city. And thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Commissioner Drexler? That it? All right. Thanks for everyone's comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are we ready, ready for reading the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Could we have the consent agenda read, please?
Vouchers numbered 17402 through 17410 in the amount of $148,952.87. Vouchers numbered 17451 through 17550 in the amount of $326,780.41. Voucher numbered 17551 in the amount of $881,742.90. Payroll warrants numbered 1645 through 1798 and 17421 through 17443 in the amount of And we have election certification and results.
Is our motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Still moved.
Second. Mayor, Chair, could we have a little discussion about an item in there? I was looking at where that would fit in. Usually, we have after the second, we have an opportunity for a small discussion. I just, I wanted to clarify, I talked to Mr. Craig Gregory earlier today about an expenditure I saw on there. And he researched it for us, and I'll let him explain what my, my, I found, you know, a five-gallon paint for 800 and some dollars. And the way it was written, I was just kind of saying, you know, $857 is a lot of money for a five-gallon bucket of paint. But Mr. Craig Gregory did research that and he has an answer for us tonight.
So Councilman Franz did bring to my attention, there was a section within the consent agenda labeled as striping paint. It did list five gallons, two different invoices, one in the amount of $865, the other for $1,730. That would be some very expensive paint at five gallons. It did not give a quantity of five-gallon pails that were purchased. So the one invoice for 865 was for 250 gallons of street paint. The other was for 500 gallons of street paint. So it was a good catch, but it was just mislabeled for the quantity.
Thank you. Good eye.
Thank you, Greg. So consent agenda, do we, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the business agenda, interim city manager Vicki Look and fire chief Tim McKern will present information about a hazard mitigation plan.
Okay, well, this is a resolution that was brought to us by the local fire. And what they did is they coordinated, got the stakeholders in the region together and pulled resources to create mitigation strategies that we could be implementing with each partner and identified capabilities within the Mason County planning area. So Tim's here to explain that a little bit more to you, so I'm turning it over to Tim.
Thank you. Well, I don't have to give any news. You probably watched every, the news tonight. You saw what was going on over in Hawaii. And obviously, that's certainly a hazard mitigation. There's a number of things there. The commission, before it came to council, first off, congratulations to all of you. I'm excited for you guys. And you'll find that in your packets, you have some information regarding what happened. The county itself had a hazard mitigation plan, but by federal and state law, we have to update that. And each entity has to create what's called an annex. The previous commission has seen the annex, approved the annex, and unfortunately, the state came back and said, hey, we also need a resolution as well to adopt it as well. Inside the, what you have there are the annex before you, there are some initiatives that are in there, and those are things that the city will provide, i.e., it talks about cert programs. I've met with Councilman Schmidt. He kind of filled me in a little bit of what your, what the folks are looking for, and you can kind of see that's where we're headed in the right direction for the hazard mitigation plans. We have to go back through and do annexes. And the nice thing about the annexes are we've identified some critical facilities. And those are really important in the event of we did have an earthquake or we had some form of a natural disaster, those were formed. And when FEMA comes in, they're going to say, are those, is City Hall listed as a critical facility? Is Basin 3 listed as a critical facility? And the answer is yes to all of those. And so it's probably a critical piece because it's a financial, huge financial asset to make sure we, we adopt the hazard mitigation plans as we move through those. So questions on that?
Chief, can you just outline how emergency management works with the city and the county and the fire department?
Absolutely, absolutely. So currently, the city is under contract with, Ross McDowell is our, is our city assistant director. So the county, actually, is one giant umbrella. Keeping in mind that the city also has a vested interest is that there are two EOCs, which are emergency operating centers, one of which is located at, at Public Works, and the second one is in our fire station. And so we have two actual EOCs. As a matter of fact, in the last few months, we've actually used the city's EOC due to the fact that the generator up at the main EOC dropped, so we ended up using it and it worked very, very effectively. So we work hand-in-hand with the, with the county to make sure things work all the way around. And the initiatives are also done totally, totally around. So every entity, everything from PUD to Mason General to Central Mason to the city, we've all created an annex. And the annex is just, it's facilitated just for the city. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, and just a comment with, with the hazard mitigation plan, one of the, one of the components to this isn't so much that it's just a boilerplate document that's signed and dated, but when it comes, comes down to receiving grant funds or assistance from the state and FEMA and other federal agencies when bad things happen to us here in Shelton, having this core framework developed and, and taken care of is important to moving that forward, so.
So staff recommendation back to you folks is just to move to your next consent agenda. If you have questions throughout, obviously, Joe's probably a pretty good expert to that and has called me and we've had some dialogue on that, so please just get a hold of me and let me know. So thanks. Book my board.
Thanks, Chief. Do we concur to moving to the June 5th agenda? Thank you.
I would just like to make one comment that, looking through this last night, I saw several references that had not been updated, references to the city commission rather than the city council, references to City of Shelton Fire Department rather than Central Mason Fire, some other names and things that need to be updated. And I've sent those to city staff, so I imagine those can be all handled prior to our next, our business meeting.
Okay, all right. So next item is community development director Mark Ziegler is here to talk to us about the Civic Center rotating art gallery.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Today, I'm bringing you recommendations from the Shelton Arts Commission for placement of the Civic Center rotating art gallery. I believe there's electronic copies for those of you that have pads in front of you, and there's some hard copies going around of the work as I speak. The Shelton Arts Commission provided a call for artists with a deadline of May 3 through local media galleries and mailing lists. Three artists submitted for the gallery for consideration. The Shelton Arts Commission met on May 8 to review the pieces, the individual pieces by each artist for submittal. The Arts Commission today is bringing you the recommendation of nine total pieces of art from three different artists, Jennifer Rutledge, Robert Chamberlain, and Michelle Zendejas. And with the council's concurrence, I'd ask that you place those approvals on the June 5 city council meeting action agenda.
Any questions or comments from Mark? Okay, city staff requests the council concur and to place the Shelton Arts Commissioner's recommended artists on the action agenda for June 5, 2018. Concur?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I believe there might be one more gentleman in the crowd there that might want to have a three-minute. Can we squeeze him in?
I believe that it is my pleasure to have an additional gentleman.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
All right. Was it you? Not, not you, Chief Moody. The gentleman with the uniform up front there.
Thank you for letting me speak. I didn't realize we had to fill out a three-by-five card. There went about a minute of my time. Congratulations to all of the new members on this council.
We need just a little bit of...
Just state your name.
Doug Coles, commander of VFW Post 1694 here in Shelton, the resident of the county op-ed on since 1950, California transplant when I was about that big. Anyhow, I wish to introduce Lynette George, who has left now. I wanted to let the council and the city know that we are in great support of the Blue Star Banner Program. We've always tried to back our people in the, in the county and the city with anything to do with, with good of the veterans. We have an NGROTC program in this county, which is excellent. We try to support our veterans, no matter where they roam, and they do roam quite a, quite a distance. They're all over the globe. We have people from every branch of the service. And we had a active-duty member when I first tried to institute this program, and I kept being told that I needed to get down here to address the council, so here I am. We had an active-duty person, and that person has since ETS'd out of the service. We still have a likely candidate over in Olympia. It's a soldier that's a, a career soldier, and he's active-duty in Fort Lewis right now. And I have to get a hold of him and see if he can come over here and be seen by our post and initiated. He just joined the VFW here recently. He had two tours in Afghanistan. And we're trying to get a name for that banner, is basically what I'm trying to say. And we are in definite support of that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to item three. Now Mark Ziegler is going to share some information about repairs needed for the William G. Reed Library.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm bringing to you today for review a contract for services with Foster Williams Architects of Shelton for repairs at the William G. Reed Library. The city recently received $288,297 in direct appropriation from the state Capitol supplemental budget for repairs to the William G. Reed Library. This is directly related to our 35th district reps and the hard work they do over in Olympia for our local community. That appropriation would address roof replacement, deck repairs, and painting of the entire structure, and gutter installation. These are all essentially deferred maintenance projects that have been put off over the years and have led to some degradation of the deck and the roof. We actually have some leaking on the roof, some rot within the deck, and it actually is not open to the public at this point. So these repairs would increase the square footage and the space accessible to the patrons at the William G. Reed Library, which is one of the heaviest, most heavily visited libraries in Timberland's system. Through this process, the procurement process, we followed the qualifications-based procurement for engineers and architects, which is based on experience and ability to perform the functions of the job rather than the actual cost of performing it per the RCW. Foster Williams Architects were the original architects of record for construction of the library, so they certainly have a lot of knowledge of the building and would meet the obvious needs of, of that local experience and experience with the, with the library itself. So again, with your concurrence, I ask that the council consider the contract with Foster Williams Architects for the design bid work for the William G. Reed Library repairs on the June 5 city council agenda, action agenda, excuse me.
Thanks, Mark. Comments, questions from Mark?
Just a point of clarification, the city owns the building, is responsible for ongoing maintenance and...
Correct.
...of the structure itself. And Timberland Regional Library operates the library function.
Correct, exactly right.
A quick question, if everything goes as planned, it'd be completed, the work would be completed later in the summer?
I was hoping that'd be the case. We're hoping to get the roof done by the, by the end of the construction season if, if we can move forward. The architect's fairly busy. The bid climate probably isn't the best... The bid climate probably isn't the best time right now as well. So we're, we're going to be, as soon as we have a contract signed, we're going to be working with the architect to move as quickly as we can to get those, get at least those repairs done before we enter the rainy season. And then the other, the other repairs might have to wait until the next construction season. But we'll, we'll have more information.
Staff recommends council concur to place this, the contract for services with Foster and Williams Architects be placed on the action agenda for June 5th, 2018. Have a concurrence? Thank you. Okay, item four, Public Works Director to discuss an amendment to the 2018 fee schedule.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Back in December of 2017, we passed our annual fee schedule update. That is a fairly lengthy document. We did not provide you with the entire document, just the portions that staff found that were incorrect when that was actually signed by the mayor. We didn't actually see the signed copy and there were some issues with some typos and some things that were just excluded out of that fee schedule that was actually signed. So we're asking to pass a resolution that would supersede the resolution that was passed back in December. And as you can see, this was nothing that wasn't brought before the council at that time. It was things that were presented that maybe were just left off or like I said, typos to that. You can see that not all of the changes are increases. Some of them, the wetlands permit that is now currently in the fee schedule at $4,000 is actually supposed to be $400. And some of the other things that had deposits associated with them, for some reason, the deposits were just left off of that fee schedule. So things that we rent out like hydrant meters, hydrant wrenches, things like that to contractors that right now don't have a deposit that's associated with the actual rental. So we are asking to change to what was actually presented back in December of 2017.
Thanks, Mayor. Comments or questions from council members?
I just want to commend staff for their going over these things with a fine tooth comb and finding these little errors before it goes to the public. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, staff request the council concur, excuse me, staff request council place resolution number 1128-0518 on the action agenda for June 5th, 2018. Do we concur on that?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, just one point of clarification. Apparently we did provide you with the entire fee schedule. So, I misspoke.
More is always better.
Yes.
Thanks, Craig.
You can always find that on the City of Shelton website also.
Director Craig Gregory has some information about amendment to the Mason County garbage contract.
Thank you again, Mayor, council members. At this time, I am going to hand this off to Bob Jean. He's got a few comments and a perspective from the, from outside the city at this point that may shed some light on what we're dealing with.
Thank you, Craig. Mr. Mayor, members of council, one of the things that I've been asked to do in addition to providing support to the city manager and staff, but has been meeting with the council, the council candidates, trying to help make sure that the transition from commission forum to council manager went smoothly. In interviewing all of the candidates, there was a lot of confusion about what really happened vis a vis the, the city contracting with the garbage company for the residential collection. And so one of my jobs is to take a look at financial purposes. We'll have a whole lot of work about that on Thursday. But this agreement has a lot of component parts to it, but as I start to look at it and took a closer look at it, I, it really became a big fan of this agreement. But for this agreement, the city's rate, collective rate was about $22 a month. And we were going to be headed into replacing a lot of the solid waste equipment. And our city garbage rates were going to be increasing pretty dramatically. On top of those rates, the city has a 5% utility tax that was applied. In negotiating with the company, they agreed to basically hold those rates relatively constant with a CPI adjustment so that the citizen wouldn't be seeing those big, steep increases. And as a part of that agreement, the city's still in, and there's some confusion about this, the city is still in the garbage business, but we're subcontracting that activity to Waste Connections. As a part of that and part of the fee guarantee that, that kept things at a stable rate for the customer, they agreed to make a payment to the city essentially to get out of the business. And that payment was understood at 36.9%. They were going to lower their base fee so that that stayed under that 22 level. The, the contract itself wasn't that clear. And so as I looked at it and then as the city attorney looked at it, Craig looked at it, they said, yeah, there's inconsistencies in that contract language. So this agreement that's before you to look at doesn't change the agreement. It's still that same deal where the citizen rate is growing at the CPI rate. In fact, when they actually recalculated a little bit, it's going to go down by 20 cents a month. So it was, the concept of the agreement was that the price to the consumer would be capped. The slight wrinkle in this though, is the city agreed to collect on any delinquencies. We had a gentleman speak earlier about a tentative his that isn't paying their garbage rate. And we require everyone have mandatory garbage. If the city were still directly in that business, we would basically go through the enforcement mechanism that we use, which is to shut off water, which is the one utility you can really shut off to turn on and off quickly. I have been in cities where they didn't have a water district and they shut off sewers by plugging the sewer. That gets a bit draconian. So the enforcement side under this agreement was and still is with the city. And the issue the gentleman raised earlier, I think with clarification on this update to the, to the ordinance and the agreement actually would solve that problem, I think, for him. But I wanted to just set the stage before Craig walked back through where we were, how we got here. But the concept was that the citizens would pay $22.29 and that was what they would pay. That included the 5% utility, city utility tax that the city charged when the city was doing it directly and now that the city is contracting with the company. The underlying components were the means by which the company could lawfully make a payment to the city, which does go into the general fund as a tax and does help with this financial issue that we've been struggling with. So it will be a win for the community at large as well as the garbage rate pair. So I think that was kind of the framework. And I'll turn it over to Craig to walk back through some of the stuff that was presented over the years. But it's the same deal. It's just cleaned up so that if you read it, I think you actually understand it rather than what was a little bit convoluted before. So I think it's a much more transparent, much more straightforward representation of the agreement between the city and the company.
So, Mayor, council members, before we get into the actual amendment, would like to just try to educate you. I, I know that all of you didn't attend all of the meetings back in what was between February and, and June. So to walk back through the presentation that we did give the commission a couple of different times and to understand that we have been looking at this for quite some time. This started back in 2015. When I was the superintendent of Public Works, we looked at every option for the solid waste department. So this hasn't been something that we rushed into, something that we just jumped into. This has been looked at and studied for more than a couple of years. So to understand that, I am going to try to get through this fairly quickly so I don't keep you here all night. So if you do have any questions, certainly stop me and I can certainly answer them. But this, like I said, was the presentation that we gave back in February of 2017, just kind of showing you on that first slide where we've been and kind of where we were headed. And to note 2016, you look at that and it looks like that solid waste department was getting better. That was after a very large rate increase that was supposedly supposed to go to the C Street landfill cleanup that was basically just covering operations. So Public Works at that time came to the commission and said, hey, let's, let's do this large rate increase to cover C Street landfill cleanup. And the actual operations ended up eating up most of that that was supposed to be going to C Street. So for that to look like it was starting to bounce back was a little misleading since we did go through that large rate increase.
Craig, the expenses there include both direct and support services.
That is correct. Yes, that is correct. So these were the options that we presented. It was basically doing business the way that we had been doing it in the past, expanding all services, getting into commercial roll-off, commercial recycling, and a few different options. There was some pretty healthy equipment purchases that would have needed to happen to expand and go to option two or option three to privatize with a solid waste hauler. And these are the, thanks. Some growing pains here since the screen, I'm trying to see Chuck's little screen over there in the corner, but with the screen being behind me. Yeah, Mark will keep me in line here. So those were the, the three options, looking at what needed to happen to support each one of those options. You can see the rate increases and the next slide will show it even better. So if we look at option one, which was staying with the original concept of solid waste is the black line and you can see where we would end up over the life of this contract. Option two was expanding services, which a lot of the stuff that we are covering in here at this point, I think I can point out and show you that even in the short time between when we actually presented this back in February and now, we have seen that most of these things that we were projecting have come true. Other than one, option two has, it would have completely fallen apart on the City of Shelton with the way the recycling market has fallen in China and they are not accepting most of the recycled papers and cardboard that we were proposing to get into. So we are very, very fortunate that we did not end up moving forward with option two the way the recycling market has dropped off dramatically. And, and we don't foresee that coming back anytime soon. So that is something that we were very fortunate that we did not get into. And that was something that we were looking very strongly at, but then ended up getting to a point where we could not recommend moving forward with option two. And then that green line was option three and what we actually ended up settling on. And the rate increase for 2018 was right at 2.5%, which is right where we projected it to be for the CPI. Pros and cons, I will skip over those unless anybody has any questions. I think I just addressed most of them with those. And with that, we certainly had a reduction in staff time. One of the main components of the commission at the time was, one of their main drivers of this was keep everybody employed and make sure that the efficiencies that you're, you're gathering off of getting rid of the solid waste services can be used in other areas that maybe we weren't getting to just because we have such a small staff. A lot of that coming in finance, some in Public Works, all the way through the office staff. So things that they are getting to now that they weren't getting to before and cleaning up some of those things certainly has been something that we've realized over the last 12 months or so. So this was the staff recommendation. One big point was that with this, we were going to have funding to clean up the C Street landfill. And this certainly has come to fruition also with the N Fund balance that ended up right around $500,000 from solid waste. We are planning on, we've been working with Bob and moving that into a designated fund for C Street. So about a half a million dollars there. And then the $710,000 that was the sale of all solid waste assets, we're proposing to also be set aside for the C Street landfill, which puts us right in the neighborhood of about 1.2 million. And with staff working very diligently with Department of Ecology and our consultant aspect engineering, we have come up with a tentative plan. We've gotten enough data back from the groundwater wells and, and what we've seen through those is that the waste that was actually buried in the ground is very old and there is not much there. So it was very good news and actually went over and met with them at Ecology, the director, Rebecca Lawson, and Andy Smith, who is just under her, and came up with a tentative plan that looks like for closing out, getting through the rest of the remedial investigation and also the actual closeout. We're looking at somewhere around about 1.5 million. First anticipated, we were thinking that we needed some large grants and some large match funds. And we thought that, that beast was probably somewhere around 5 to 10 million is what we originally thought. But I guess we did some good back in the, the 50s and 60s burning the trash that was up there. And it's, like I said, fairly old. So good thing for that. So looking at where the actual customers' bill actually goes to all of the different operations, you can see with this breakout, we tried to show everybody, the council and citizens and customers, where their actual payment was going to. And we showed that the revenue share ended up being a fairly large portion of that. But to keep all of those functions moving really just served as a, as a tax and that's what it is now. Originally, we had a pretty good portion of that embedded into the base rate. We did end up, and that is part of this amendment, moving that out so that we were not taxing a tax. So by embedding the original utility tax within the base rate, then we were actually taxing the 5% utility tax on top of that. And also the 3.6% utility tax to the state for, not utility tax, refuse tax that goes to the state was actually taxing the tax that was embedded in the base rate. So that is a, a section of this amendment that, that you will hear after we get done with this presentation.
Craig, can I clarify that?
Sure.
So everything above revenue share is basically payment to waste management?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. So you can see the city's portion. We were looking at all of the funds that solid waste pays into. And what that number came out to be was about a half a million dollars a year. So the direction of the commission was to try to recoup all of those funds so that we didn't have to basically supplement with some other tax revenue to, to supplement those, those activities. So that's what we did. And that was where the 26% utility tax came from originally, which is now, and we'll discuss it some more, now that it's not embedded within, the base rate actually was pulled out, extracted out and added to the 5% utility tax. So it ended up being a total of 41.9%. 36.9% was what was actually embedded in the base rate. And I'll explain that some more once we get into the body of the amendment. I know that doesn't make much sense now, but I'll try and explain it better as we get into that. So this was the timeline. I told you that back in October of 2015, we actually started this and we have studied it for quite some time. So we do hear some folks, customers, citizens, and even some, some county citizens that have contacted us and told us that we rushed into this, that we didn't study it very well. But frankly, we have been looking at this and I have devoted a lot of time to studying how we get through this with solid waste. get through this with solid waste. So this has eaten up a pretty good portion of time for about the last 24 to 36 months of that time. So you have my word that we have looked at every aspect of this. So that concludes what was the presentation back in February. I would certainly answer any questions, and if there aren't any questions, we'll move into the actual body of the amendment.
Questions for Craig?
So the two main areas that we looked at with this contract that needed to be changed with this amendment was the utility tax portion. So like I said, the utility tax originally was embedded within the base rate, and you can see what we actually looked at at the bottom of page one of the amendment. It spells out what we actually had prior, what the utility tax was when it was embedded, and then what it is that we're proposing to pull out. And you can see, as Bob mentioned earlier, by pulling the utility tax, the 26% utility tax out of the base rate and making it a 36.9% utility tax that's not in the base rate, actually lowered the average bill by about 19 cents. So by not taxing a tax, we actually saved the customers... I know it's only fractional, but it's 20 cents a month off of their bill. The other portion of this was really the enforcement. Bob kind of touched on it earlier, and we didn't really have a mechanism. We knew that either a code enforcement issue could come of this or the fact that we could turn off water. We had an issue with that originally with the water concept that we no longer have the bill. Unless we were going to actually bill from the city, which finance was not in agreement with, we didn't really have a mechanism to actually turn water off to get the customer to comply with the city code. So what we have done at this point to not only comply with city code, but also the actual body of the contract, is that we are going to take on any of that bad debt that the customers are not paying, and that way we can actually put it on to our utility bill. And the way that our utility bills are structured, whenever a customer actually remits payment back to us, the taxes come off first off of the bill. So let's just say, for an example, there's a $20 payment that's due. The first portion of that would be the taxes that come out of that $20, and then it would go down through all of the utilities except water, so stormwater, sewer would be taken out, the bad debt that we took over from Mason County garbage for the garbage service, and then the last portion would be the water portion of that bill. So if somebody only pays a partial amount of their bill, we still have the ability to turn water off because their water bill is not paid in full. So that is the reason that that is structured. That is, and really over Washington cities, that is the way that it is done through finance in at least all of the cities that I know of. I don't know if Bob's ever run into any that don't do it that way, but that is actually why they do it that way, is because the one thing that you hold is water. If you turn somebody's water off, they typically will come right in and pay their bill, or even the threat of that gets them to pay their bill.
And the flip side of that is it's the easiest to turn it back on.
It is true.
Turn on, turn off notice. If you go out and plug the sewer, you have to dig it up and put a plug in, and that's a tougher way to do it. So, yeah, most cities that have a water utility, that's exactly what Craig described is the last... from a accounting standpoint, those of you that are accountants, your first dollar in goes against everything but the water. Your last dollar goes to pay your water portion. That's the enforcement tool, and it's also the... once the bill's paid, it's the easiest one to turn back on.
So Craig, I have a question.
Yes.
So if they don't pay their garbage bill, then we do it this way.
So...
How does Mason County get their money?
So I'll go through the timeline and kind of what that looks like. One thing with this, one point of clarity, we did, in front of each of you, we did put a redline version of this that is different from the one that is actually in your packet. So if you could find that redline portion, we did find... actually Mayor Rogers brought it actually to our attention, and it was something that we wanted to address within this agreement. We really had a difficult time thinking about if we take this over, and I'll get into that more, but Kathy, or Councilmember McDowell, to answer your question, so Mason County would bill at the first of the month. So you have a full month after that bill goes out to actually make your payment to Mason County Garbage. So at day 30, Mason County Garbage is going to send out a notice notifying the customer that they are delinquent on their bill and that there is the possibility that their debt will be turned over to the city at day 30. So that would mean they were 30 days delinquent. At day 45, Mason County Garbage will actually send us all of the bad debt that they have not collected back to the city of Shelton, actually at day 46 is when that will happen. At day 45, they will actually terminate the current account that the customer is using and establish a new account so that we don't have... we can still meet the city ordinance or the city code and actually not stop garbage service. So that was the main goal, is we don't want there to be a gap where the customer does not have garbage service. So they will shut that account off, actually establish a new account at day 45, and then send any of those bad debts that we may have with Mason County Garbage to the city. At that point, there's about a two- or three-day period that finance will have to get that portion onto the utility bill for that next month's city utility bill. So at that point, the customer will know, another notice will go out at day 45 to let that customer know that they have been turned over to the city, they have been started a new account, and that we will be sending that out on their utility bill. So the issue that we had is Mason County Garbage has an automated bill pay. So technically, if the 45th day fell on a Friday, that 46th day, somebody could call up and make a credit card payment on day 45. The problem with that is, is if we have customers out there that are struggling to pay their bills, now all of a sudden, they've got this payment that was sent to Mason County Garbage that's sitting in an account, and we're also asking them for that same payment, which could be a problem. And when the mayor pointed that out to us, we went back and took another look at it, actually revamped it, brought some new language forward. So at this point, we did find a way with Mason County Garbage that the customer, if they run into that situation, can actually ask for a refund. So they're not just going to hold that payment. So if we've got somebody out there struggling to make their bills, at day 46, they can... and they made that payment, on day 47, they could actually call up and say, I made a credit card payment, it was a mistake of mine, I went past the past due timeline, will you give me a refund so that I can pay my city utility bill? They will be able to do that. If it was a check that was mailed, Mason County Garbage uses a third-party processor for payments, so they would not know if they got payment in. So at that point, if the check actually clears, the customer, and it's spelled out within this redline version, the customer can actually take a copy of that check and ask for a refund back after that check has actually cleared for Mason County Garbage, which leaves them plenty of time before their water would ever be shut off to actually make a payment to the city. Because our bills are going to go out about three days later, about day 48 to 49, and then they've got another whole 30 days before it actually goes past due with the city. So they've got plenty of time to actually make their payment with us before we took some sort of action to make sure that we collected on that. So then as soon as we get that payment back in, we will cut a check to Mason County Garbage to cover all of those payments that were not paid to Mason County Garbage. So really, it's just a transfer in, transfer out of payments to Mason County Garbage to continue garbage service for every customer.
So how much... we always wonder how much more work our city staff is going to have to do on this.
It is going to be some. It's going to be... it is going to be obviously more than they have now, but certainly with the reduction that we've had in having to deal with solid waste issues, I still think it's a net decrease in the amount of staff time that we are going to be needing to provide that, but it also gets us a mechanism to make sure that we're upholding not only the contract, but our city code also.
I have a question. So they have their water and their sewer bills paid, they're in good standing with the city, they don't pay their garbage bill for protest, whatever reason, they don't pay their garbage bill, then we go shut off their water, charge them probably a shut-off fee, and then at some point, we charge them a reconnect fee?
That's correct. That is the penalty that you get for not abiding by the city code, and it was the same as when we had the garbage service. If you didn't want to pay the garbage portion of your bill, you were going to run into really the same mechanism we have now.
Why is it that we have to be the bill collector for Mason County Garbage?
Because we entered into what Bob explained as a very good contract?
I agree.
So we entered into a very good contract, and Mason County Garbage would not have given us the contract that we received from them if we wouldn't have been able to guarantee them a... really, a level of membership and customer base is really what it comes down to. So if we have half of the city of Shelton that says that they're going to self-haul, you have not only a code enforcement issue, but you all of a sudden have a contractual issue with Mason County Garbage at that point.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add, it gets back to the earlier comment I made. Two issues. One, we have mandatory garbage collection in the city, so that's a given before or after this agreement. Secondly, we are still in the solid waste business. The companies just are subcontracting, and so enforcing the provisions of the agreement is still our obligation. So at some point, the hammer comes down, and I think the water enforcement mechanism, as I mentioned earlier, I think is the easiest one to reverse. Other than that, it's more complicated.
Craig, I just bring up that if they're delinquent and they finally pay, then the Mason County... the waste management will also add for that new account to be another, what, $20 currently?
It is a $20 new account fee.
So that would be in addition to the shut-off fees for the water?
That's correct. And it's likely that we are going to study how much effort this actually takes with our finance department, and it's likely that there could be something that we bring forward to the council in the future to try to recoup our costs also if we end up looking at this, and it's taking a large effort to make sure that we comply with that. So that is a possibility also.
If this were to happen today, roughly how many people would lose access to water because they're in arrears with garbage payments? Just a rough number.
I don't know if I can answer that specific question.
Yeah.
Because it would be very difficult to know who was going to come in and actually pay their bill or would suffer getting their water shut off.
How many people are in arrears right now?
There you go. So we did get a list of 30, 60, and 90-day delinquents at this point. The 30-day list was fairly extensive. It wasn't huge. I want to say it was around... I want to say it was around 80 or 90 that were 30 days past due. The ones when you... you could see that people are actually paying their bills, because when you get out to 90-day delinquents, I think there was a handful, there was like maybe 20. So eventually, customers are paying their bills. We didn't have a lot that were just not taking the service. We maybe had some folks that were struggling to pay their bills, and that was maybe the last bill that they were going to pay, but you could certainly see the drop-off between what was the 30-day delinquency and the 90-day delinquency. So they are catching up eventually. So to somewhat... sorry to interrupt you, but to somewhat answer your question, yeah, are we going to have some that are going to get their water shut off for the simple fact that they couldn't pay their bill? There may be some of those, but it doesn't look like it... it looks like when they're getting fees and charges applied to their bill, they're eventually paying their bill.
And just to put that in perspective, Craig, how many customers does the city of Shelton have transferred that service to Mason County Garbage? I mean, we're talking about 80, 90 customers out of how many?
Oh, you're looking at... I know water connections within the city were around 3,500, so I'm guessing that the garbage service is about the same. I'm guessing that it's fairly close.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Say it.
And don't hold me to that number. I am guessing on that. I know how many sewer customers we have, I know how many water customers we have, and I'm guessing that garbage is going to be somewhere in that same ballpark, but that is a... that is an estimate. I certainly will get you a number before the June 5 meeting of how many we actually have. I may be completely off.
Craig, did that cover what you wanted to cover?
It does. And certainly, any other questions about this amendment? I know we went through quite a bit, but just for transparency reasons, I certainly wanted to make sure that we got you all of the information to try and make a decision on this. I know that it is not easy, it's not something that we took lightly. This contract and privatizing certainly did not come lightly for me, but it really came down to a business decision that, as Bob pointed out, we had some very, very large rate increases coming just to cover operations that wouldn't have addressed our C Street landfill issue. So we really... I think looking at this over the last 12 months, you can already see that this was a great business decision for the city of Shelton, and that's really what it came down to.
Thanks, Craig. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Staff request, council concur to place Mason County Garbage Contract Amendment Number One on the action agenda for June 5, 2018. Do you concur on that?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Craig Gregory again, going to share some information about a vaca... vaca...
Vacation.
Vacation, thank you, of public right-of-way.
You got it. It is hot in here, too, isn't it? So Mayor, council members, I do bring forward to you tonight, we have had several discussions on our process of vacation of lands. This is one that we looked at, and it makes sense for us to move forward. In the past, we have looked at a praise value of lands that we were going to vacate. In this certain circumstance, I think there are a lot of city benefits, and it would benefit not only ourselves, but the property owner also. And it is the block between 10th and 11th on Railroad Avenue, and some interesting history to Railroad Avenue. One time, we had a 100-foot right-of-way from Front Street all the way to 12th Street on Railroad Avenue, which is a very large right-of-way, 100 feet. And I'm guessing that it was because of the rail line that ran on the north side of Railroad is what I'm guessing. And over the years, in the 50s, there was a large portion of it, I believe, between Front Street and 8th, that the north 20-foot section of that right-of-way was vacated, and it was really, I think, for an alignment purpose for the business owners. And at this point, out to 10th Street where this abuts to, has all been vacated. So everything from Front Street to 10th is all in alignment. We do have... we have pre-subbed, we have not received at this point an actual set of building plans for approval, and that would be one condition of this vacation, is that we don't actually approve it until we get an approved building permit for that site. But the area between 10th and 11th, a very nice-looking complex for Olympic title, is proposed there at this point, and we have provided you with quite a few handouts, but it would provide for alignment of on-street parking sidewalks, which they would have to construct to... which they would have to construct to be in alignment with the rest of downtown Shelton on Railroad. So any of those maps, I know we provided you with quite a bit, maps, drawings. If you have any questions with those, I certainly would be happy to answer those.
What side of Railroad is that on 10th and 11th?
It's on the north side. And that is the portion, it's just the north side of Railroad that has been vacated in the past. Nothing on the south side. So basically, all of the businesses on that south, or on that north side of Railroad, that, I'm guessing that is the reason that that was vacated.
I don't see any compensation for the vacation, or is that the 8-foot sidewalks and ADA ramps?
Well, that is what we're proposing, is to not have compensation. They would have to construct the sidewalks anyway and on-street parking. But it's really a benefit and an overall look to the City of Shelton that that does align. It would be fairly difficult to stripe that roadway if we had this large jog. There's already an interesting jog in the roadway, if any of you have looked at it, that I didn't even realize, traveling that for the last, you know, 40 years and never really seeing it. But right around 10th Street, it makes a pretty good jog to the left. So this would just make that even more pronounced, that if you had a building that was back off of that roadway, that it would be, on-street parking would be back, would be set back another 20 feet. It would just make for an interesting area down there. So that is the proposal. I think it benefits the city as much as it does the property owner. So we are asking for no compensation at this point. We certainly can discuss that if the council would like to go down that road. But when you do that, that is a process of getting an assessment of that property, getting a value. So if that is something that we want to do, we are certainly open to that. But I think for city benefit, I don't know that that is the best use of our time and effort at this point.
Other questions? Okay. Staff request Resolution 1127-0518, the city map and preliminary drawings of site be placed on the action agenda for June 5th, 2018. All of you concur?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Craig.
You're welcome.
Okay. It seems to be common, whoever the mayor is, back to Craig Gregory. He's going to tell us about, share about garbage service appeals.
So we do have this in every other utility. We want the customer to be able to be heard and give them that opportunity if there is a dispute with their bill. So we want to make sure that we give the customer that ability with solid waste also at this point. If we decide to move forward with the amendment to the garbage contract and we end up taking that debt onto the city bill, we want to make sure that we give the customer the ability to make that appeal to the city. So this is in alignment with all of our other utility appeals. It is the same process.
Just to comment with that, kind of when reading through this, I'll just jump to Section C there. Although sanitation services will continue to be provided as compulsory services, that's what we discussed previously, the ordinance that says garbage must, will still be collected regardless. Any other utility services will be subject to disconnection. I would just request that that be specific to the utility service we plan to disconnect. So we will shut off water.
Understood.
Make that very clear to whoever's engaged with this.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions? Okay. So I guess we'll ask for initial reading of Ordinance 1922-0518.
Ordinance Number 1922-0518, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington relating to garbage sanitation service appeals, amended Section 8.08.00 of the Shelton municipal code.
If you change that, will we have to have another reading?
That is a question for Vicki Look. If we change to specify the water utility portion within that, do we need to have another reading? Another first reading of that?
If it's a substantial change, what I, I think is clarification.
Yeah.
So I would think that we could, we could continue with just the second reading and adoption next week.
Okay.
Thank you. Staff request council hold a first reading of ordinance Number 1922-0518 and place it on the action agenda for June 5th, 2018. Concur on that?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
It's a crowd.
It's getting late. We move on to action agenda. Interim City Manager Bob Dean will present a draft of the city manager's position profile.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The three-member commission had interviews set with all eight of the council candidates, city staff, and three community members designated by the commission in meeting with Bob Slavin, the consultant that's helping us with the manager recruitment. And with that, he developed the attached position profile. This essentially, excuse me, this essentially is the marketing piece. How we promote the community, how we describe the job, and the job skills that we're looking for. And basically, Mr. Slavin's job is to go out and find someone, ideally five or six candidates that you can interview, who could help you achieve these goals, this agenda. So I'm not going to read it to you. It's pretty clear about describing Shelton, the organization, the, I call them the consensus goals. You haven't officially approved them. As a city council, we'll be talking about them on Thursday. But my guess is they're going to be substantially the same as what you've got outlined here. So we didn't want to hold up the recruitment process waiting for that. So unless there are some corrections or some changes that you want to make to that, the whole process was designed where the city commission started the ball rolling, but they now threw it properly in your lap. So this is now the city council's recruitment. So this would be your first official step as a city council, to approve the position profile and tell Mr. Slavin to get to work.
Okay, so at this time, has anyone signed up to comment on this action item?
No.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Comments, questions from the council?
I'm trying to be quiet so that I can give you the luxury of chairing the meeting without a lot of disruptions. So I'm trying to make sure that my comments are properly timed. So I don't have a problem with moving forward with this process.
I concur.
Any other comments, questions? All right. If the council approves, the city manager position profile, the Slavin Company will officially open the city manager recruitment.
I think a simple motion, Mr. Mayor, would be an order.
So do we have a motion?
So moved works, Kathy.
So moved, to accept this. I move that we accept this and move on.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right. Thank you. Okay. Craig Gregory, Public Works Director, has information about the inter-local agreement with MTA regarding the bus pullout.
Thanks again, Mayor, council members. We would like to move forward with an inter-local agreement to construct a bus pull-off on the downtown connector project at 8th Street, essentially closing off 8th Street to vehicular traffic. And construct that, putting in a bus shelter and also a pull-off area. For that, MTA has agreed to pay for the construction of that area, provide the actual shelter, and just a few other things that we have discussed with them would be a rapid flasher also for pedestrian traffic on the project. So a great partnership that I don't think we've had in the past, and they have been wonderful to work with. And we are happy to rekindle that relationship with MTA.
Questions for Craig?
I have to add to that a little bit. I was at MTA meeting today, and the subject came up. And I thank them for being involved with us and working with us and sending us, what was it, $96,000 to help us complete that, the funding for that project. They were excited about it.
Just a question on the flasher. Would that, you saying it'd be on 8th Street?
No, it's not going to be on 8th Street. We have talked about two different locations. We talked about one down by the courthouse, somewhere in the area of 4th, 5th, or 6th. And we also talked about one at the top of the hill, right at the crest of the hill at C Street.
Right.
So those are the two locations that we have been looking at.
Wouldn't be at the pull-out loca-, okay.
Yes. I have been working with Danette Brandon to figure out if they are actually going to have a stop somewhere in that area. They already have one up at the top of the hill by Skipworth. They do have quite a bit of foot traffic that crosses Olympic Highway North. They also are looking at, they don't currently have one down at the courthouse. They do have quite a bit of dial-a-ride that drops off and picks up there. But they are looking at an actual stop there. So one of those two locations, if not both of those locations, we are certainly looking at.
Okay. Thanks, Craig. Any other questions?
Mason Transit maintains all their stops.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. Anyone signed up for public comment?
No.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion to accept?
I move to approve the partnership with Mason Transit Authority by authorizing the mayor to sign the inter-local agreement for the construction of a bus pull-out for the downtown connector project.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, thank you. Craig Gregory again for talk about inter-local agreement with PUD Number 3 regarding streetlight poles.
Again, another relationship that I don't think we were very active in at one point throughout the last few years. But it has been great to work with PUD 3 and Justin Holdgrove out there to get this project with illumination. So they are going to provide basically all of the labor to install all of the illumination poles. They have certainly helped us in the design of that also. So to provide those services, we are asking to enter into an inter-local agreement also to provide the construction of illumination poles on the downtown connector project.
Thank you, Craig. Any public comment?
No.
Thanks, Donna.
Okay, I have a comment. So when they design those poles, are there going to be hooks on those, for those flags, if we decide to do the flags?
It was something that I was going to mention. We've got the pole purchase also later on. But those have been designed for not only hanging baskets but also flags. So that was something that we looked at, and within Public Works, we certainly wanted to provide an aesthetically pleasing project.
Yeah.
And you see those in every other city, and I've always wondered why we didn't have the same. And I figured that was a great corridor to have those.
Oh, awesome.
So we actually designed them with the flag poles off of the street side of that pole.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
You're welcome.
So do we have a motion?
I move to approve the partnership with PUD 3 by authorizing the mayor to sign the inter-local agreement for the streetlight poles.
Second.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, thank you. Craig Gregory is going to share information about the purchase of the streetlight, no, excuse me. Jumped ahead. Director Gregory has information about material testing services for the downtown connector project.
So we don't have staff on board to provide materials testing. This is one of the things with projects that requires us to go out and seek a qualified professional. We did that through a request for qualifications. And we have selected construction testing laboratories. They are the same material tester that we are using on the Basin 3 project.
Thanks, Craig. Thank you, Donna.
Is this all part of the grant money?
Yes, it is.
Comments or questions from the council? Do we have a motion?
I move to allow material testing services to be supplied by Construction Testing Laboratories, Inc. for the downtown connector project by authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with Construction Testing Laboratories, Inc.
Second.
Second. Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Now on to information about the purchase of the street light poles from Director Gregory.
So, last one for me. So you can see the light pole purchase. We actually started off by looking at PUD providing the light poles for us for this project. A total of what we ended up settling on with the street lighting and also pedestrian lighting. There are going to be a total of 33 illumination poles on the downtown connector project. And like I said originally, we had looked at PUD purchasing those and installing them. But after further discussion with having grant funding available to us, it made much more sense to purchase them ourselves. At this point, the illumination poles for a 25-foot pole with the PUD, it's 74 cents a day. We pay that for the life of the pole. So you end up paying that forever. So by purchasing our own poles, the cost, we ended up doing 30, 31 and 1/2-foot poles, which the pole per, per pole charge would be more for those. We couldn't get an exact number of what that would be, but to give you a reference, the 25-foot poles were 74 cents a day. Ends up being, for this project, if we got them and had PUD pay for them, it's about $9,000 a year. So these poles that are going to be purchased with grant funds and have no cost to the city will actually end up saving the city about $9,000 a year and paying for themselves over less than 20 years. And then at the end of 20 years, that payment will completely, would have completely stopped at that point. So we are asking to move forward with the purchase of actually 35 illumination poles, which would give us two, that if one of them get hit, damaged, whatever it might be, we have a couple of replacements that we will actually store at the Public Works facility down on Pine Street.
Thanks, Craig.
No public.
Thanks, Donna. Comments, questions from the council?
No, he's answered my questions.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just a question, Craig, I think it's great. Are we also going to have water, the ability to go up inside the pole to water the plants?
We are not. We looked at that and...
Because these are concrete.
They are. That is correct.
But that wouldn't be there. Okay.
Yeah. It was something that we certainly looked at. It increased the cost of it quite a bit. And at this point, luckily, we have a local business that donates the watering for all of our hanging baskets, so...
I just wanted to clarify that that is actually paid for through the Chamber's beautification.
Okay, there you go.
I put my chamber hat on for a minute. So Tojers is contracted for that service, but it's funded entirely by community donations.
There you go. Even a better answer.
Glad to answer that question. See you later.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I will, I move to approve the purchase of the streetlight poles from vendor Annixter Incorporated by authorizing the mayor to sign vendor awards.
Seconds?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Next, City Attorney Kristen French is here to present us with Resolution 1125-0518 having to do with appointment of an interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. As you are all well aware, we're transitioning to our new form of government, the council manager form of government. Our state code provides a framework which we'll be operating under. And you can find that under 35A13 in the RCWs. One of the fundamental requirements of a council is that it appoint its manager. And so this is essentially a housekeeping item. We have a city manager, Vicki Look, who's been serving in that capacity. We have a city manager, Vicki Look, who's been serving in that capacity, and the way this resolution is framed, we have attached the current contractual agreement with Vicki Look in that capacity, and it would simply be an action by this new council to confirm that appointment moving forward.
Thank you, Kristen. No, no public comment? Okay. Comments, questions from council members?
It would be my pleasure...
I was just going to ask you what you thought.
I just said it would be my pleasure to have Vicki Look stay here for 475 years, but I'm sure she won't want to stay here quite that long, but she has done a phenomenal job for the city of Shelton. We're very much appreciative of what she is doing for the city, and so whatever I can do to throw my very thin weight, not a lot of weight, towards that, what do you call, position, I would do so. So I would make a motion.
So you want to read it, or you want me to read it?
No, you could read it, you're so good at this. No, go ahead.
I agree with Gary totally on that.
I move to approve resolution number 1125-0518, hold on a second, a resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, appointing Vicki Look as the city manager.
Second.
Point of order, do we need a reading of the resolution?
We do.
We need a reading?
Yep, that's what it says. Who's going to read it? Donna?
Resolution number 1125-0518, a resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, appointing the city manager.
Do we have a motion? And a second?
I will second it.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Chris is going to present us with resolution 1126-0518, which confirms the appointment of the municipal court judge.
Right, and as you are all aware, while operating under a commission form of government this past January, Judge Steele, municipal court judge, was appointed for a four-year term, running from that date for a period of four years, and so this resolution would simply make that an action of our new council form of government for that pre-existing four-year term, and again, we attach the underlying information to the resolution.
No public comment?
Okay, comments or questions from the council? Okay, Donna, could I have a reading of the resolution, please?
Resolution number 1126-0518, a resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, confirming appointment of municipal court judge.
Is there a motion to approve resolution 1126-0518?
I move to approve the resolution 1126-0518, a resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, confirming appointment of George Steele as municipal court judge. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, Kristen, you're back up for ordinance number 1921-0518.
Okay, and finally, this ordinance has to do, again, with some housekeeping items. With the transition of government, we will be having some pretty significant city code amendments in the future. I will call it a placeholder, we are doing a most basic amendment at this time, which is to reiterate that we are a council manager form of government now, striking the commission form and replacing that. Similarly, the council is vested with authority to design the positions that it intends to have staffed at the city, and to agree to salary provisions for those employments, and so this, this ordinance functions to essentially placeholder that structure as it now stands, and afford the council some opportunity to study and, and design what it wants to see in the future as we move forward.
Thank you, Kristen.
No public comment.
Any questions, comments from the council? Seeing none, can we have a reading, first and final reading of ordinance 1921-0518?
Ordinance number 1921-0518, an ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, ratifying the existing municipal code with amendments, ratifying existing employment positions and salary schedules.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 1921-0518?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I, I gotta read it. I move to adopt ordinance number 1921-0518, an ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, ratifying the existing municipal code with amendments, and ratifying existing employment positions and salary schedules.
Second.
A second? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thanks. Administration report, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
A lengthy one, a long one, make a very long...
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to point out that recently, we received word from the Washington State Office of Public Defense that they had a little bit of extra funding left over for grant recipients, and so we did make application for some funding, and they did get back to us and tell us that they are awarding us an additional $4,000, and so I will be signing the grant agreement, increasing that funding, and I just wanted to alert the council that that is going forth, and so we will have that additional funding for our public defense fund, so.
Okay.
I do also want to ask the council to keep in mind that we will be talking to you Thursday, and we're going to be asking to set maybe a special meeting to talk about some items that are coming up on sort of a sensitive time schedule, and that is to maybe set a public hearing for the consideration of declaring surplus property to the city, and so we'll be asking maybe for a 7:00 meeting on June 29th, and I'm looking at Craig, oh, May 29th.
May 29th.
And so we will check in with you on Thursday on your schedule for that date. Okay, I think Bob has a couple of comments.
Thank you, Vicki.
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I have your packets for your reading pleasure. Most of it, this is for Thursday's workshop, most of this material, a lot of it is the work product, so don't be amazed at some of the stuff. We're going to walk through the summary material, but I know some of you are more in the analytical bent than others, so for those of you that want all that we know, we got it all here. So don't, don't leave tonight without, without your packet, and we'll start at 9:00 at the Transit Center with an exec session, that's a closed to council, it's a closed, meeting closed to the public, obviously open to council, from 9:00 to 10:00, and then 10:00, the workshop itself starts, which is an open meeting, so that was pretty quick.
Bob, is it possible to get digital copies of those sent to us as well?
Second.
I think... Are we on the position to, I know most of it is, but...
I can email it.
I think you can scan it.
I think the answer is yes.
Even a scanned copy would be fine, just so we can follow along.
Yeah, the answer is yes, we're, we're transitioning along with you.
Yeah, perfect.
We're trying to keep up.
We're all in this together.
Ready to adjourn, correct? Next meeting will be Tuesday, June 5th, 2018, at 7:00 PM.
Yes.
I told you to do that every time.